Gentlemen, y'all sat.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Bristol Town Council meeting of March 11th. The Pledge of Allegiance will be led by Act Six. Did I get it right? Excellent. I was giving them a hard time earlier. Come on up, if you would, please. Right up here in the middle, so everyone can see you. Act Six is going to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. I'll stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Right here in the middle. How about this one, right here? Tell us when you're ready. Good? Okay, let's do it.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Round of applause for them, please. Thank you. Nice job. Yeah. See those cameras right there? So everybody can see it. Nice job.
Well, mine was recycled.
I understand there were seven heard speeches for this, but they've opted not to go that way, so. Thank you very much. Mr. Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the Town Council. The first item on this evening's agenda is the consent agenda.
Motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approves or any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next submission of minutes of previous meetings, Items A, 1 through 3.
Motion to approve as stated?
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approves or any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next item is an advertised public hearing, continued from your February 19th meeting. I have understanding that there's a request to continue it further.
Mr. Solicitor, if you could.
Yes. The amendment is undergoing review by all the parties that are being affected by it, and the request is to continue this matter one final time. I know it's been here before, to April 29th, please.
So that's two meetings away, is that correct?
Two meetings away, because they're not going to be ready by April 1st.
Motion to continue to the April 29th council meeting?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next item is Item E1, and this is the tattoo license renewals for 2020.
Could someone please mention Halsey-Harris?
I was waiting for that, too.
I was trying to look for him to check in if he would give us a referral.
For those of you who don't know, Halsey was a perennial favorite here, because he did not like tattoo polars, and he didn't believe that they were appropriate, and yet they would pass anyway. But he would have that moment in the sun that he would point out his...
Motion to approve the tattoo license renewal for 2020?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
And similarly, the cesspool license renewals also for 2020. You have recommendations provided by the town administrator and water pollution control superintendent.
Based on the recommendations, I move to approve it.
There's a motion and a second to approves or any discussion? I know that Halsey did not have any opinion on this whatsoever, so we have a motion and a second to approve. All in favor?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next item is the petition of Susan Narone, asking permission to use the Town Common Basketball Court for the annual 4th of July Bristol Stomp Block Dance on June 13th. You have recommendations provided by the town administrator, fire chief, and chief of police.
Based on the positive recommendations, I make a motion to Bristol Stomp Block Stop. Well, I can't say it, but Block Dance Party on...
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Is there discussion?
Yes, may I, Mr. Chairman? Just, I didn't see anything here from the recreation director. That's the only thing I would request that in the future, we consider the recreation director whenever it involves the facilities.
That is just a plaything.
You saw from the administrator, not the recreation director. We didn't get it, did we?
We did.
We did? Did I miss that?
So the question was, was there a recommendation from the rec department?
Oh, no, this is their application. Yeah, there's no recommendation. It's their application to the rec department.
Do you know of any concerns, Mr. Administrator? Yes?
Yeah.
No concerns, no. Same as last year.
Somewhere.
Okay.
It's a great event.
I'm good.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second to approve. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Next item is Item F2, and this is the petition of Daniel Manchester for the Bristol Historical and Preservation Society, requesting use of the Town Common between the State House and Whitefield School for their fleet and fair event to be held on June 6th with a rain date of June 7th. You have recommendations provided by the town administrator, fire chief, and chief of police.
Based on all the positive recommendations, I make a motion to approve.
Second. There's a motion and a second?
Mary.
And a third? Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
And the next item is the petition of Joseph Rodriguez, 150 Franklin Street. Request council consideration for a handicap parking space on Franklin Street. This is the first reading.
Motion to approve the first reading?
I just had a quick question for this.
Can we have a second before we do that?
I'll second.
So we have a motion, discussion?
I have just a question. I mean, I have no problem with it, and I see all the information from the Department of Veterans Affairs, but I don't see the placard. Do we need that to...
The placard is, it's actually mixed into the next round of documents.
Okay, all right. I was just wondering about that. I was curious. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'm a little bit confused, because 150 Franklin Street, if I understand correctly, is Franklin Court. Am I correct? This is the address to Franklin Court. Now, when I went there today, as I pull into the parking lot, there's a sign that says "Private Property Franklin Court." So are we installing the sign in the lot itself?
This is on the street.
Okay. I'm not seeing that.
Let me direct, let me begin, because there are two department recommendations with this.
Thank you.
One was from the police chief, and one was from our DPW director. So the situation there is that one of the residents at 150 Franklin Street, which is Franklin Court, is requesting a handicap space on Franklin Street. Police Department did do a survey, they looked into it, they spoke to the management there. There are, state law requires four handicap spaces for the premises on private property. They have 14. So this individual is looking for, and maybe rightfully so, but he's looking for a handicap space on Franklin Street, which is actually a walk away from the parking lot. And they, so it would, you know, there is a recommendation from the DPW director, I'm sure he can comment, and Chief Lynch is in here, but Captain Burke is here, if you have any additional questions.
Well, since we brought it up, Mr. Director, if you could...
I think the information that was just presented, it's relative to Franklin Court. I spoke with the director at Franklin Court. Police Department, as you just heard, verified the number of on-site accessible parking spaces. This request is for an on-street accessible space, separate from, and it appears that this is, the desire is to be a personalized type accessible space on-street, which, if you read my recommendation, I recommend denial based on the fact that the 150 Franklin Court, I mean, the Franklin Court, 150 Franklin Street, has in excess of the required number of spaces on-site. So I don't need, I don't understand why we need another one to take up a parking space on the street, on Franklin Street.
Okay.
Does that clarify the information?
I guess my question is, so if this individual's at...
We don't usually give recommendations.
This individual lives in Franklin Court?
Yes.
Okay.
That is correct. I contacted and spoke with the executive director of Franklin Court to discuss this issue, and that's where we got the information relative to the number of parking spaces, the number required, and potentially the motivation for the request for the petition.
So before we go too deeply, and obviously we wanted to kind of surface this, we don't typically go too deep on first reading opportunities for more discussion is second. I think it was a great question. Maybe if on, before our next meeting, there could be a conversation with the applicant and find out where the needs exist, and if it's, obviously, they have the opportunity to come in front of the council and have this discussion, but if there's a potential solution prior to the next meeting, if we could take a look at that, that would be outstanding. And again, obviously, this applicant has the opportunity, and so do we, to look further into this before the second reading happens, so.
Mr. Chairman, just, I concur with you. However, what I would ask is, is it possible to have a conversation? I mean, since he's a resident at Franklin Court, I understand they've exceeded already the parking, the number of handicap spots in the lot?
Required, right.
Or required?
Right.
But they certainly could, I mean, the conversation should be, if he has to go across the lot to get to the Franklin Court, why aren't they accommodating him right in the parking lot? That's the thing, I mean...
Well, I think the issue is that they exceed the required per ADA criteria number of spaces on-site, but keep in mind that accessible parking spaces are not for individuals particularly, and that's the issue at hand.
So are they, but are they, some of their parking is assigned to different units, isn't it?
The site parking, the accessible parking spaces are not assigned to individuals.
It can't be, by state law.
Right, but some of the others are, aren't they?
I don't know how they handle their other parking spaces, but, but just keep in mind that any accessible parking space signed on-street is an accessible space to anybody qualified to park there.
So you just said, as long as you have a placard?
Correct.
Then you are able to park there. It doesn't belong to a person, even if they applied for that.
That is correct.
Okay, all right. Captain, did you want to add something?
I was just going to echo the director's, the director's response, that it is not specific to an individual, and additionally, Sergeant Viera did talk to the petitioner. The petitioner did indicate that he has spoken to Franklin Court, but the police department will recommend that he continue that conversation, to see if there's any type of assistance that Franklin Court could provide to him to further his request.
That sounds appropriate, so.
If I could add to the captain's dialogue, I did speak with the director, and the director indicated that if we tried to provide a dedicated accessible parking space, we would not have enough, because there are enough people qualified within the residence of that.
That's what I was going to say, it's a precedent-setting issue, for sure.
Correct. That is correct.
And if I could just say one thing, and you can tell me it's inappropriate at this point, but it's relevant to this discussion, I think. So in my prerogative, I was just going to bring up that parking issue at Franklin Court, because I ran into someone the other night at one of the church dinners, and was telling me how frustrated many of the residents are in coming out of the, on the Franklin Street side, and even that there's a mirror there, but they can't see, and how, she was almost in an accident the other day, and I think that we, and she was asking me about whether or not you could get rid of a parking space or two. And I, you know, I know it's tight parking there, so I just, I know that may go on the list for the issue that the chief is looking at, the police department's looking at, or for you, but I just wanted to bring that up, because as we're looking at this, that's also a request, and that could eliminate other parking spaces, potentially.
That's correct, but I'm not sure you remember, Councilman Perola, that we already extended the no-parking zone to the west from the exit from that facility, and we worked with the police department on that one, and it was restriped in the fall. So that step has already been taken. If it's not good enough, and we want to go further, I mean, not to confuse the two different issues here, but that would be something to consider.
Right. I was just going to bring that up, and I figured it was relevant here. It was not something that went back that long, it was something that happened recently, and the need for further back, I'm just saying. You know, so I just wanted to put that out there in relation to this discussion, because I was going to bring it up later.
Okay. So it sounds like we've had some discussion with the applicant, maybe we can continue those discussions and find out if there's an opportunity for other areas that they could find accessible parking, but we'll take this up in the next meeting, and if we could address what's already been brought up, that would be outstanding before the next meeting, so. So we had a motion and a second to approve first readings, or any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Thank you, everyone.
The next item is the Public Service Appointment Section, and the first item to be considered is the Bristol County Water Authority. This is with term to expire in February of 2023. You have three applicants, Juan Mariscal, currently serving, who seeks reappointment, and also Russell F. O'Connell, 1382 Hope Street, who is interested in potentially being appointed, as is Robert Campanella of 4 Leland Court.
I would make a motion to reappoint Juan Mariscal.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to reappoint. Is there any discussion? All in, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I would just like to say, in light of everything that's been going on with the Bristol County Water Authority, I think we should keep a vigilant eye in regards to the increasing costs down there. You know, I, at some point, I think we should revisit and visit with the board just to see what their overall strategy is at some point, but I just wanted to bring that to my colleagues' attention, I just, year after year, and I think, Mr. Chairman, you've mentioned it as well, just the escalating prices are getting quite high.
I'm giggling, because I think I had a little rant at the last meeting.
10%.
Yeah, 10%.
10%, right?
Yes. So, so we have a motion and a second to reappoint Juan. Is there any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next item is the Charter Review Commission. This is for the three-at-large members. Probably for the sake of time, I won't read all of the names that are available, unless the council wishes me to do that.
No, Lou, but if you could remind everyone how we got to, what we decided, how we were going to narrow the list down, if you don't mind, just very quickly.
Okay, so...
Thank you.
What the council decided, as far as the Charter Review Commission is concerned, is that this has to be a nine-member commission, and initially, each one of the council members and the town administrator were given the opportunity to appoint one person, so that would account for six, leaving three remaining members that the council would choose together. There was a request that the council members should do their best to select their top choices for the remaining three, and information was provided to me individually by council members, and then we did a tally, which I shared with them.
That was a nice synopsis, thank you. And then we ended up with a weighted, and we picked the top six, as the clerk pointed out. So having those top six, and all of us have that information, what we'd look for is nominations for the three, we'll call them at-large positions.
I'll nominate Peter Hewitt.
Second.
So we have one nomination for Peter Hewitt. Is there, we have two remaining open possible nominations. I know we have, we can do more, but...
Do you want to vote on them individually?
I think that's an outstanding idea, Mr. Clerk. So we have a motion and a second, nomination and a second, if you will, to appoint Peter Hewitt. Is there any discussion?
I just do have one question about procedure. Are we going to just take the remaining, the six that we appoint, and then do them as a slate, and then...
We're not voting, we don't have to vote for those, as I understand it.
Oh, we don't have to vote for those?
No, they're already, the warrants are already typed, so...
Okay, I thought we had to make an official appointment through the voting procedure.
Yeah, I think we just, we just make an announcement.
Okay.
That's a great qualifying question, thank you.
Yep.
All right, so we had a motion and a second to appoint Pete Wilber. Is there any other discussion?
Peter Hewitt.
Pete Wilber's a good friend of mine, and I would like to have him there, but I also think Pete Hewitt would do an outstanding job.
He might do a great job. He doesn't live in Bristol, though.
Can he, can he come back from Charleston? Anyway, sorry about that. Sorry, Pete. Both Pete's. All right, so Pete Hewitt, there's a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Next.
I'd like to appoint, I'm sorry, I need to appoint Jane Lav...
I was going to, okay, go ahead.
Oh, Jane Lavender.
Okay.
Is who I'd like to appoint.
We have a motion and a second for Jane Lavender. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And third and final.
I move to appoint Will Grapentine.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
There's a motion and a second to appoint Will Grapentine? Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Things should go that smoothly all the time. Thank you very much. My goodness.
Okay. So, the next is the Harbor Commission. We have two seats available. It's a three-year term, with Daniel Egan currently serving, not seeking reappointment, James Dolan's currently serving, seeking reappointment, three new applicants, Robert Campanella, Patrick McCarthy, and Peter Silva.
So it would be appropriate to set up the interviews?
Yeah. Just going to say, a motion to accept Daniel Egan's resignation with a letter of thanks. Lou? And we would go ahead and proceed to set up interviews for the remaining applicants.
Second.
There is one currently serving member. Do you want to include that person in there?
I don't know, my colleagues...
So your point was, is James Dolan's is...
Right, he currently, he's currently serving, seeking reappointment.
I don't think we need to. I don't think we need to.
I would just reappoint him now.
Yeah.
I mean, he's served, so...
Tell you what, we have that motion, and I think we can make a separate one to reappoint James. How's that?
Yeah, that's fine.
You were mid-motion in regards to...
So we'll set up the interviews, and then we'll go ahead and reappoint James.
Okay.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to set up interviews, and also to reappoint Jim Dolan's. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Similarly, we have the Harbor Commission alternates. This is with, there are two possibilities with term to expire in March of 2023. You have Stephen Roth currently serving, seeking reappointment. You have Andrew Naron, who currently serves, who is not seeking reappointment, and Patrick McCarthy, who is seeking appointment. I will point out that in Mr. Naron's case, he had served previously on the advisory committee, and he did ask me to inform you that if there were to come a place back on the advisory committee, he felt that that was a better role for him.
Thank you.
Motion to reappoint Andrew Naron back to the, on the advisory committee?
There's no spot yet.
Oh, no spot.
Okay, so you have Stephen Roth, who is seeking reappointment, and you have Patrick McCarthy, who is also seeking, he is seeking appointment, and there are two slots.
So I move...
And Mr. McCarthy was also an applicant for the full commission, not to make things too complicated.
I don't feel that's complicated at all, sir, no, not at all.
Let's try this, okay, so let's reappoint Stephen Roth. I move that we reappoint him.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No, Patrick has not been on the committee. He's asking for an appointment, am I correct?
Right, he is currently on the advisory committee.
And he says that he's the longest-serving advisory committee member that's not been moved up in his line.
So we would elevate him to Harbor Commission?
Not to the Harbor, well, I, we, our previous motion was to interview Patrick along with Robert and Peter as a Harbor Commission member, but I suppose he is a, remind me, please, his current position is?
Advisory committee.
Advisory.
Advisory. So we can, we can move him up from advisory to the open position, which Andrew Naron previously held, if this council so chooses to do so. But then he's also looking to be part of the Harbor Commission, so that would also be an interview that would happen. We could hold off making that appointment, and just make it part of that interview process, find out how that outcome goes, and then offer openings accordingly. How's that sound?
It sounds like a good way to go about it.
Okay. All right. Was that in a form of a motion?
So...
Is there a second? Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
So we're interviewing everybody, and we haven't appointed anybody to the...
We appointed Stephen Roth.
Right.
Yes.
So Stephen Roth is appointed, we're sending a letter to Naron.
Right.
Okay, and then we're going to interview...
Pat McCarthy.
Mr. McCarthy for both positions.
Correct.
Is that correct? Okay, just want to make sure I got it right.
Perfect.
Okay.
Doing a great job, as always.
The next item is Assistant Harbor Master. You will recall that there were two new applicants for Assistant Harbor Master. When the Harbor Master assistants and auxiliary members were appointed in, a couple of months ago, and the Harbor Master asked for the opportunity to interview these individuals, he has come back and says that they're both suitable candidates, to be Jonathan Madira and Michael Van Vlak.
Based on the Harbor Master's recommendation, I move that we appoint them.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
And then we have the Recreation Board. There are three positions. This is one, to fill an unexpired term to expire in February 2021, and two terms to expire in February 2023. You have three applicants, Nancy Horn currently serving as a full member, seeking reappointment, and you have Michael Cabral, who was interviewed recently, who seeks appointment, and Edward Quinn, who currently serves, who is not seeking reappointment.
So I would move that we reappoint Nancy Horn to that one, to one of the positions.
The full position?
As well?
Yeah, I don't have an issue.
Okay. The February 2023? Or the unexpired term?
Well, she's, she's on there currently, so the February 23.
Yeah.
Agreed. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
I move that we appoint Mike Cabral to fill the other term.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to appoint Mike Cabral. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
And there remains one vacancy as full member.
So we shall...
So do we want to advertise again?
About reappointing, what's his name, Don, Don Squires. Can we do that?
So we could move them up.
Mr. Squires, or, or he didn't indicate that he wished to do that, full member, but it would be, you could do it perhaps subject to his approval.
How about this? Unless there's objection, why don't we reach out to Donald and find out if he has interest in it? And at our next meeting, if he does, we can take that next up. Is everybody okay with that?
Yeah, and what about Crystal Peisho? I mean, because she's a, I mean, both of them, both the auxiliary?
Yeah, she, she is the more senior auxiliary person.
Right, so does she have an interest too?
I don't know.
So why don't we reach out? That's a good point.
She just, her term just didn't happen to be expiring, so that's why. That's why she didn't have an application from her, although she didn't ask about the full membership.
I mean, I would move them all up if there was...
Yeah, let's reach out to them on the auxiliary and find out if there's interest, and we will go with most senior, as we've typically done in the past, but certainly up to this council at that point.
Makes sense.
Mary, I heard that as a, as a motion. Did I hear that?
I did.
Excellent. I'll second Mary's motion.
So we have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
So we'll put that on for your next agenda for consideration.
Thank you.
And finally, we have zoning board review, and this is a single position with term to expire in March of 2025. You have David Simos currently serving, who seeks reappointment.
Motion to reappoint David Simos.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. We'll take a moment here. We just went through a lot of names. Thank you. The town and the council and all that work for the town say thank you. We had a lot of people who had a lot of interest in the charter review, and as you heard, the other positions that we've just went through. This town is so fortunate to have volunteers, people that give up their time with their family and their friends to give back to the community. There's, there's some younger people here this evening, and actually, and older people here this evening with the same uniform on that do the same thing. So this is an opportunity that this council doesn't take lightly. We know how much it means. A lot of that's gotten done around town, and I'm almost done here. A lot of that's gotten done around town, including some Eagle Scout projects of cleaning up some access to the waterways and other places around the VFW, or because of volunteerism. And we can't say thank you enough, but we're gonna try every time and say thank you.
And they are listening so attentively. I can see someday they're gonna say, I'll be up there, I'll be sitting in those seats, I can tell. And hopefully you will.
Mr. Clerk.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I, I know that the, the Fire Chief is here wearing a very heavy uniform, and I know that he had a message that he wanted to share regarding the coronavirus pandemic.
So I don't mind telling you, Chief, that when you come in with a uniform like that, it makes me a little bit uncomfortable, so you didn't have a mask on, so I'm happy about that, so.
And just to be totally in line with the open, could you just quickly vote to add a discussion of the coronavirus to the...
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Chief?
Good evening, everyone. Mike DeMello, Fire Chief. Just wanted to take a few moments to apologize for the attire, but we're in the midst of some hands-on training, so I wanted to shoot down here, and Councilwoman Perella had asked if I could give some information on the coronavirus, so I will do that rather briefly. Myself, the town administrator, we've literally been listening in on conference calls and things on a daily basis, sometimes multiple times a day, also working with our partners in the regional school district in our neighboring town of Warren, with the school district involvement. So we've, we just want to reiterate some of the guidance that's out there. We want to encourage vigilance, but not panic, and really do, do what you would do if it was a concern of influenza or flu-like symptoms. Wash the hands, clean the surfaces, minimize the risk as much as possible. There's been a lot of talk about events, and we've seen a lot of events canceled, and I think that was a case-by-case basis. There was some new guidance that came out today suggesting certain numbers getting up over 250, and you should consider canceling the event. And I think a lot of it comes down to being able to manage the risk and looking at what type of event, who is coming, and if you know who is coming, and you can communicate with them and get the message out that stay home if you're sick, if you've traveled to affected locations, don't attend the event. But really, stay vigilant, don't panic. We're on it, we're monitoring it, again, multiple times a day, and if anything changes, we will let you know. However, I think the risk is very low, and I think the majority of the people can go about their daily business, whether it's personal business, whether it's the businesses in the community. The only message is to, again, kind of practice that, that hygiene, personal hygiene with the hand washing, coughing into your arm. If you're, if you're sick, stay home. For businesses, maybe a little extra cleaning. I know that's, we've ramped up the cleaning in most of the town buildings, so maybe instead of once or twice a day, maybe it's three or four times a day, and just, just go a little extra precautionary and just minimize the risk as much as we could.
Chief, I heard a good example of how to wash your hands. You should wash your hands if you have, like you have pepper spray on it, and you have to change your contacts. That's how much you should wash your hands.
Yes, yes, there's some good analogies out there, but really, a minimum of 20 seconds, so whether it's a song, a metronome, whatever, whatever gets you 20 seconds of hand washing, go for it.
I put a smile on it, but obviously, we're, you know, we're cautiously concerned, and use your brain, right? You know what's right and what's wrong.
Correct.
Just be careful out there. So, anything else that you wanted to add?
Nope, that was it, unless you have any questions.
You look warm, we don't want to keep you anymore.
It is toast.
I was wondering if you were, that's what you were doing when I came by and saw all the fire trucks on Medicom.
Yep, yep, we're taking advantage. It's not often we get a building that we can go in and practice on and essentially cut up and do things like that, so we're taking advantage of it as, as we can.
Yeah, very cool.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you very much for coming.
Mr. Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The next item is item H1, and this is the petition of John Gasper of 10 Chilton Street, requests council consideration for accessible parking space. This is the second reading for adoption.
Make a, make a motion to approve it.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next item is the petition of Raymond Delaio for Gooding Realty, Realty 16 Gooding Avenue, requesting a curb cut on Naomi Street. This was continued from your February 19 meeting, and you have a petition from Emily Spinnard and others requesting a traffic study, et cetera.
Mr. Solicitor, could you, I understand that through you, we have a continuing request.
Yeah, I've been speaking with the attorney for the less seized of the property. They're very much aware of the issues regarding a potential traffic study, et cetera. They want to cooperate and, and work with the town in that regard. So the request is to continue the matter to April 29, to give us an opportunity to meet with staff and whoever to come up with some kind of solution.
We just need a motion to continue?
Motion to continue.
Second.
To the 29th, I'm sorry?
To April 29.
Thank you.
Yep.
Is there any other discussion?
Is our petition going to be heard?
No, because we're continuing this, and because we're gonna continue it, there won't be any dialogue about it, as you've just heard. So I'm not gonna allow any dialogue, because we are gonna continue it, but certainly, you are absolutely welcome to share, and I'll stop and say that, that's why I wanted, it was by my request that you were contacted today, so we could save you the time, because I knew it was gonna be continued this afternoon. So I wanted to make sure that you knew that, to be respectful, because I would assume that you'd come down. So, but we aren't going to hear from anything, we are gonna continue this.
Okay, so I, I understand that, and I understand that you did contact us. Also, that contact was on the last minute. Some people have decided the neighborhood that they did want to come tonight, mainly because...
I don't want to have any, any...
I understand that there's no discussion.
Go ahead.
But I did want to let the people know in the neighborhood, there are many who are watching on TV tonight, because we told them that there's gonna be no hearing. Up until last month, the neighborhood was never contacted or involved with this.
Right, I wanna, I'm gonna stop you...
Okay, but all I want...
I'm gonna stop you right there. I said it, I've, no.
Can you?
I'm sorry, no. I'm sorry, and I'm gonna say, I want to say this really respectfully.
I understand, and I'm respecting you.
Okay, we're gonna stop right there, sir.
You cannot, you cannot tell the neighborhood tonight.
Sir, I don't know how to say, Mr. Solicitor, if you could help, if, because we're gonna go down a place where we're gonna get uncomfortable.
Here's the issue, because it's advertised and set up as a hearing, the council cannot have a hearing without all the parties involved.
That's why.
And, and you're certainly here, and, and it was only today that we received the request for the continuance, but those things happen. I know the council is going to hear from everyone on every side of this issue, and so it's not appropriate without the applicant here to be, to also get up, say, after you get up and, and give their thoughts on it. So it's just, in, in terms of fairness and due process, et cetera, it, and by the way, I, as solicitor, I'm more than happy to talk to you offline. You can, you can call me, you can call the town manager.
Thank you.
We can bring you up to date.
All I am asking, I'm only asking one thing. A petition was submitted. All I'm asking is that petition is going to get due consideration, because 60 people in my neighborhood asked me to make sure that their concerns with safety is going to get due consideration.
And the petition's been submitted, it's already part of the record, petition.
And we were prepared to say that tonight, but on the 11th hour again, we were told that the thing is delayed. And all I'm asking, we submitted a petition, I'm asking that that give due consideration, because up until this point, the neighborhood has not. That's all I'm asking.
The petition's in the record, and I, and both you and others who want to be heard at the hearing will have every right to, to be heard.
And that will be in three weeks.
That'll be on April 29th, April 29.
That's actually more than three weeks.
Again, one last question. Any new information that's submitted? Will that be?
Public record.
Give us the opportunity to look at that, not on the 11th hour again, right before the meeting?
It will be public record, absolutely. So as we get it in, our, our agenda is published, Mr. Clerk, remind me, when is it, Monday?
It's, it's usually published on Thursday or Friday before the meeting.
There you go. So...
But I will, I will tell you, as I told Mr. Spinnard, if it's some, if there is an agenda item, it has always been the council's practice, practice to accept late items if they come in late.
And I'm gonna reoffer, Mr. Spinnard, you feel anytime you want to contact me directly, we'll get you that information, and you can contact me.
Thank you, Mike.
We'll keep you updated.
Thank you. So we have a motion and a second to continue. Is there any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Okay, the next item is, not quite sure where this stands right now, but it is an invitation, the annual invitation to the City of Newport Annual St. Patrick's Day Parade on March 14.
We thank the City of Newport for this wonderful invitation, and a motion to receive and file.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to receive and file. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next item concerns the Church Street Marina. This is from the Coastal Resources Management Council, joint public notice.
This is a receiving file, Mr. Clerk?
I believe so. You know, I think there are, there are opportunities to, to react to, to these applications. I don't know if it's appropriate for us to react to something that is for us.
Diane, did you want to weigh in at all on this? I don't know if there's any necessity at all.
No, I believe the Harbor Master indicated that they're really only looking for comments of objection, and...
It would be kind of crazy for us to object to something we want, right? Yeah, you're right.
Well, I think most of us are, we're all in support, so a motion to receive and file.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to receive and file. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
This is also from, from the Department of Environmental Management. It concerns a Roger Williams University project on, on their waterfront.
Again, a receiving file?
Motion to receive and file.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Diane, you looked like you had a question there, is there? Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next item, Mr. Chairman, members of the town council, this is a little problematic. This was a, a letter that was submitted through the chairman by the housing authority regarding the building of the, at 1020 Hope Street, and when we looked at it, we thought that there was, they were talking about their, also their 50th anniversary, so the agenda item itself, as it's listed, doesn't really consider the, the topic at hand, which is there's a desire for them to de-acquisition the property back in favor of the Benjamin Church Trust. And that should have been how the agenda item was, was presented to you. I think what the solicitor will advise is that it would be okay to add an agenda item if you wish to discuss the merits of the issue, but obviously, you can't vote on it tonight because of the way that it's presented in the agenda.
So the, the letter is before you, the letter itself is on the agenda, so you can discuss the contents of the letter, but as the clerk said, you won't be able to vote on it tonight. To vote on it, you'll have to continue it to another meeting, either one of your upcoming budget meetings or another meeting. But basically, what, what it's about is the Bristol Housing Authority needs to convey this property back to the trust, because HUD won't fund anything regarding that building, because it isn't used just for housing. So because it's not used for housing, and I guess it's one of these things where HUD wasn't aware of this all these years, so now that they are aware, no one has any objections here, they just want to be sure that the public through the town council is aware of this process. So what, what they're looking for at a to-be-continued meeting would be a motion from this council basically saying it's fine that the housing authority for $1 conveys it to the housing trust. It's that simple.
And is there any timing? If we, if I make a motion to continue to the April 1st meeting, is that, is there, are we on a deadline here?
I believe there is a bit of a sense of urgency.
Okay.
So what, in speaking with the chairman when we discovered the, the problem, what I'm going to do is I'm going to set a special meeting that will occur within one of your budget meetings next week.
Okay.
Okay, whichever one seems to have the lightest load, and, and then we'll just have like a special meeting that'll be plugged in, the same way you do like special meeting for interviews or something like that.
So rationale behind having the conversation tonight was I felt it was on the agenda already, and I thought it appropriate, because these are taped three weeks more, actually live meetings every three weeks, I thought it was appropriate to have our discussion like this, and then to take action correctly and appropriately at our next, at a, at a meeting, which we have budget workshops like next week on Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday, so one of those, we'll advertise it accordingly, so we can take appropriate action.
So a motion to continue to the budget workshop, is that acceptable?
Well, I think to, to a date to be determined, but it will be, it will be one day next week.
Okay.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion?
I just, I just wanted to point out that this is not really a surprise. This was brought up at this council before, and we knew this is coming.
Yes.
So I think they want to formalize this with a formal letter, but we already discussed this, and knew about it, and, and have, we really don't have a choice.
No, they're, they're at the point where they have to make this happen now, and this is one of the final things on the checklist that they have to check off.
Right, so I just wanted to point that, make that point, that's all.
That's a great point.
Yeah, I remember having this discussion. Was it about last year at budget time or something, like right after budget?
I think it was maybe in the fall, maybe.
No, it's been, I, I think Aaron might be correct, it's been that long.
It's been almost a year.
Yeah.
But can you remind me, though, we, we don't own that property.
No, oh, no, you do not.
And so why did, why do we need to send a letter over there? Is there some, what's legal basis do we have for even doing this?
Yeah, so the, because we support the Bristol, the Bristol Housing Authority, and through the budget, et cetera, so...
Financially.
We, we have a financial stake, let's put it that way. So it, and, and it's, again, it's one of HUD's requirements that a, a, whether it's in your town or another town, this is one of their requirements for council approval when this type of transfer takes place.
Thank you.
Well, I mean, it's just interesting to think that by our decision to not support something like this, that would stop them from actually going out, and we have no ownership in this building or anything like that, so...
And, and I'm not 100% sure that it would totally stop it, but it would certainly complicate matters.
Well, I think a lot of times, like, one aspect of government wants to make sure that the other aspect knows what's going on.
But that, public notice is the biggest issue here.
You know, it's just like that town isn't blindsided, any town blindsided by the fact that a building that they've used or has been in the public eye for a long time is now taken out of, out of the picture, and no one can come back and say, we didn't know, because now you can put the letter and say, yes, you did, your council in such and, you know, 2020 agreed to it. Or acknowledged it. I don't know if it's agreement or acknowledgement, basically, I think.
Okay. Anything else? Okay, so there was a motion and a second to continue to a meeting to be determined. It'll be one of our budget hearings for next week. Is there any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Item five is from the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers regarding the expansion of the Church Street Marina.[1648.54]
Motion to receive and file?
Second.
There's a motion and a second to receive and files? Is there any discussion?
Just said, I'm excited that we're taking these steps and we're moving forward.
Agreed.
It's a big project and we wanted to move forward, and it's happening, so.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Item I six is from the Director of Community Development regarding the resilient Rhodey Municipal Resilience Program.
Diane?
Thank you. This is just to keep you informed, we did submit to be a participant in this program. We were selected. They want us to go first with the workshop.
Oh.
So we're working on scheduling that now. It's going to be an invitation-only facilitated workshop with key stakeholders so that we can develop a list of actions in a plan that we can then apply to the Rhode Island Infrastructure Bank to fund through grant, through their, their grant program. So it's, it's going to dovetail nicely also with our hazard mitigation plan, which has to be updated next year, so we'll take the list from this process and we can fold it right into that plan and be a lot further ahead. So we're very excited, and I just wanted to inform you that we were going forward with this.
Excellent news. Thank you, Diane.
Who's, who's spearheading the, the project?
From the state.
From the town, no, from the town.
From us? It's, it's my office.
Your office is the one, oh, okay.
And, and Diane, if I remember correctly, Warren got this grant last fiscal year, right?
Yeah, Warren did the project, Warren Barrington Portsmouth.
And Portsmouth. So what that does is, with us getting this, we're going to have the whole East Bay that's gone through this grant program.
Right.
And the, the thing about the, you know, the challenges that we're going to face in the future is that they don't know man-made boundaries, the challenges that we face, the flooding, the stormwater issues and everything like that. And so to have the whole East Bay in on this and educated under this program and having the tax, or the accessibility of the tax dollars and the grants and everything like that, I think is awesome.
Yeah.
Well put. Yeah? So we need a motion to receive and file?
So moved.
Thank you.
Thanks, Diane.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
And finally, you have the annual Bristol Fourth of July Celebration Resolution. That's item I seven.
Right around the corner, right? Motion to adopt this resolution?
Second.
There's a motion and a second to, to adopt the resolution? Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Next item is item K1, and this is the periodic report, this time provided by Bill Goslin, one of the Warren Directors of the Water Authority.
Motion to receive and file?
Second.
There's a motion and a second to receive and file? Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Following that is L1, and this is a request for executive session, which we'll take up at the conclusion of the public agenda. Next, we have individual council member agenda items, beginning with the chairman.
I'm going to start off by saying, PAC Six, thanks for staying with us throughout the whole thing. I'm not catching you leaving, I'm saying, really, thank you. Thank you for staying throughout it.
You were great.
And thank you for leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance, too.
Thank you.
So, just a couple of quick things. Bridge update, Silver Creek Bridge, I spoke with the area supervisor today, and things are going really well. They did some micro pilings, those are the small things that they're going to, the bridge will actually sit on. It's going extremely well. In the meantime, they've made some adjustments to the traffic signals on Medicom Ave and have lowered the queue time, the wait time, if you will, by over half. So, and they continue to take a look at that, which is just outstanding. And obviously, we're dealing with, it isn't fun to deal with it. We see police there 24/7, correct, Captain? And it isn't fun to deal with, but dealing with it, we're doing an excellent job, and they're moving, they're right on target to be done when they said they were going to be, and I thought that was outstanding. I'm going to steal a little bit of where the administrator likes to go at the end of meetings and talk about updates. We're, I don't know if you've driven by Prudence Island Ferry Dock, some, that's moving along quite nicely, and we're making, as you heard through some earlier agenda items, some great progress with the Marina expansion. That Marina expansion, it's kind of, you have to be patient. This council and this town has to be planners. We have to look at, we don't make decisions for just today. It's multiple years, and I think in a couple of years from now, we're going to have an expanded Marina, we're going to have a fuel dock, we're going to have a lot of things going on downtown that will help feed our local businesses and improve the lives of our Bristol citizens. So I think it's outstanding, and it's because of the hard work of all that are in this room, including PAC Six. PAC Six, you're doing a great job with all of this, so. Besides that, thank you, everyone.
Mr. Sweeney?
Great update, Mr. Chairman. Director McBride, I was just wondering if you could, wouldn't mind just giving a quick update? I'm seeing some really, really attractive trash barrels out there around town.
Yeah, I appreciate it, Councilman, for taking a moment. I just want to bring everybody up to speed. On the cart distribution, we're about 75% distributed at this point. Businesses will follow on after we complete the residences, they're different sized carts and different numbers, but I, I can't emphasize enough that these carts are not to be used, I repeat, not to be used until the week of March 30th through April 4th. That's the last, or the first week of April, the last day of March. So if you put them out now, we can't pick them up. We're not utilizing the new vehicles to do it yet. The reason for that is, so everybody knows right up front, I haven't had the entire town distributed yet, so I can't start collecting them if I don't have everybody's cart distributed at this point. Distribution is going fairly well. The staff is getting hammered. I'm telling you, it's just, it's incredible, the amount of phone calls, the issues that crop up. We, we used our tax rolls as the basis for distribution for the residents, and we're finding issues there, and working that through, you know, the tax collector's office, or tax assessor's office. So it is time-consuming, but we're tracking, and as I said, we're about at 75% as we sit. I hope to be completed, the distribution, next week at this time, and that will give us the week or so to do the catch-ups, the ones and twos that we need to go back and straighten out. We found a lot of them that have had issues with the number of carts, not getting a cart, not enough carts, and so on. So we will get to that, it's on the list, we have a spreadsheet that we're creating as we go, so we won't miss anybody, and we'll have plenty of time to catch up and get everybody into the system. It has been a complex process, but it's rolling, as you've seen our ads, the newspaper last week, front page, as well as our website, town website, and some Facebook, you know, social media things that have gone out. So that's where we are, Councilman, I appreciate the moment of yours.
No, no, you guys are doing a great job. I just wanted to wish everybody a happy St. Patrick's Day, and I'm looking forward to the productive budget workshop coming up next week, so that's it. Everybody, have a good night.
Mr. Texera?
Just a question, the budget packets, Mr. Commissioner, do you know when they're going to be going out to us?
Planned for Friday.
Friday, okay, thank you. Somebody wish a happy St. Patrick's Day, about happy St. Joseph's Day as well.
I was going to say that, what happened?
Let's add that one in.
That's Mary's job. Mary usually, Mary usually grabs me on that one.
There's not a Portuguese day in there this time around. I'm sorry.
So who's bringing what on what night for the budget, right?
What can I bring on St. Patrick's Day?
Do you pay the St. Police?
No green beers, that's for sure. I know, yeah, budget would go better.
Anywho.
I'm all set.
Thank you. Thank you.
Ms. Perella?
Well, certainly, happy St. Patrick's and St. Joseph's Day, and then I just want to revisit the issue I brought up earlier, if, and that is about that situation on Franklin Street. Could, if you could take a look at it again and maybe talk to some of the residents at Franklin Court to see if it is a problem? I mean, I, I heard a great deal about, about how difficult it is to get out the other night, and I didn't think it was an issue, and I was actually, you know, like thinking originally that it was the Wood Street side, it's the Franklin Street side, so if DPW, I know you're super busy right now, and the police department could take another look at that, I just appreciate it.
Councilwoman, I know that when we addressed this the last time, and, and we voted on it, the vote was to extend it by six feet, so I think what might have happened was, if you drive by there, it looks like it's only been extended by a couple of feet, and the thing is, is that when we write these ordinances, we don't say, "Extend this no parking spot by six feet." We say, "Hey, if it's a 28-foot no parking spot, add 34, it should be a 34-foot parking spot." And, and I think what happened then was, is that only two feet were added to that pre-existing no parking spot, because you can kind of see it there, right? They have the box, and then it seems like it's only been extended two feet, so. Do you know what I'm talking about, Mr. Solicitor?
Yeah, and I see Kevin wants to respond, too, so here's what we're going to do. Just want to, again, stay in line with the other meetings. Could please, a quick motion to add this to the agenda, and then we'll speak.
Okay. Is that a motion? Can I have a motion? Does that affect?
So moved.
That's fine, yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Continue.
Okay, so that, maybe Kevin, you want to address first, and then I can talk about the specificity of the ordinance.
Yeah, I mean, we can, we can take a look at what it says in the ordinance. I do remember the six-feet discussion item. What was placed in the field, I couldn't tell you, I'd have to check that, but I know there was extended discussion on this, this whole element of extending that, and this is the no parking block that's on the west side of the exit coming out of Franklin Court. In other words, if you're looking to the west. We worked with the PD on that, so I'll just check the length of that, and if it is what it is, I don't, that's what was voted on at that point.
Thank you.
So what I'm just asking is to take a look at that, not, not necessarily the six feet or the two feet or whatever, but the fact that, does it need to be any, any, any more than that? I understand the parking over there, trust me, I do, on the street and the neighborhood. I'm just asking to double-check that whole situation, because I'm hearing that it's very difficult to get out of still. And it could be, you know, it could be like, there are trucks that travel up and down there, and, and some of them, I think, maybe go too fast, I don't know. That seems to be part of it as well.
Yeah, I think what the issue is, if I remember correctly, when we originally went over this, is the vehicle, the first vehicle in line in the authorized parking area along the curb is creating a problem with them pulling out for some reason, and I'm not quite sure why. I'll take a look at it again, I'm pretty sure there's a mirror on one side that, that looked back to the west, and I'm not sure if they're utilizing that correctly, but we did extend that.
Right.
And I, I will re-verify the length of that extension to see if it meets what we had discussed and approved.
So what the residents told me, there were a couple of them that I, I was talking to, they told me that the, the mirror doesn't help that much. So I'm just saying.
Which, which, okay.
I'm just conveying, like, I mean...
So I'll tell you... Yeah, I mean, I, I'm not really a big fan of those mirrors either, because if you don't understand how they work, then it could be somewhat misleading, because they're a, a convex mirror, and it's distorted when you're looking at it. You know what I'm saying? It's not like looking in your rearview mirror, and it's distorted to give you a greater sight picture, but it doesn't necessarily give you a clear understanding of the distance from the vehicle approaching, and that's part of the problem in my mind. What I will check is the physical no parking space that we, we, one, was voted on and approved by the council, and make sure that that was actually in fact in place in the field. I think that's where we need to start, and if it wasn't big enough, then we need to add to that. If it is big enough, then we're talking about a separate issue. You know, do we want to extend it further? I think that, I think that's the best way to approach it, Councilwoman.
Right, so I'm just asking that you continue to, to look at those things and maybe talk to some of the residents and, and find out the, you know, is it just this one or two people that had an issue, or is it a common problem?
Yeah, I'll discuss it, I'll contact the executive director and get her thoughts on that, and I think that's a good place to start, and, and then we'll go from there. But again, I'm going to field verify what's, what's there, so that's important, too.
Yeah, yes.
So, Mike, in regards to now that we have this agenda item, what's the...
So I, I think it makes sense to, to do the investigation. If, if the area needs to be expanded, we can do that. Normally in the ordinance, we say, you know, 30 feet, 15 feet, we, we try to put that, or if there's a poll number, we try to put the poll number in there, and, and we can certainly, if we need, even if the space on the ground meets up with the ordinance, it may be, we still have to expand it more.
Right, and I, that's what I'm saying, if it's, if it's correct in its placement, then we've taken care of the original request. I think then we'd be talking about a separate item to extend it further, so that the ordinance gets adjusted properly to account for that. But let me get to the field and figure out what's out there, and then I'll touch base with the executive director.
So could I ask that, I mean, maybe to the chairman's point, that at the next council meeting, agenda, this is on as an item, and you give us the answers of what you've found?
Correct.
Okay.
So I'm going to take that as a motion that you'd like this on. Am I okay with that, Mike? How do I, how do I deal with...
No, we can't, we can't make a motion.
Okay.
Not make a motion, but I mean, we've always asked Lou to place stuff on...
All set.
Yeah.
Look at that, it's all set.
There you go.
Magic. Thank you.
Just very quickly, I, I know, I've driven, I actually, today I drove right out of the parking lot, and no matter how far we're going to go, pending where vehicles are parked there, they're always going to have a difficult time. That happens also on Chestnut Street for the Benjamin Church, man, and I remember when I sat over there, we had the same issue, is how far do you go, you know, and, and pending,